Thank you everybody for joining us. This is Ms. Bosn led the work show that we call this Tuesday, November 20th. Installation and reorder to order at exactly 3:04 PM. First order business is the invocation, the pledge of allegiance. Pastor Griffin, come on up. Give us an indication. Indication. It's given by Pastor Quincy Griffin of Family Worship and Praise Center.
Good afternoon. Let us pray. Father, first we lift your name on high for all things you've already done, but what you're getting ready to do now. We thank you for the emerging of new leadership in our county, and we understand that without transition, there will not be progress. So Father, we ask for a special anointing at this meeting. Bless the outgoing, the remaining, and the incoming leadership with honor, health, and continuous prosperity. Send your anointing of wisdom, knowledge, and understanding upon them to lead this county to deeper depths and higher heights. Open heaven and bless us with the spirit of unity and esprit de corps, for we know with that nothing will be impossible to us. Although we are privileged to vote, you are the one true and sovereign God, too wise to ever make a mistake, and you are in control. Now let your spirit be the guiding light and the leader in our county, and lead us to the greatest places that we've ever been. We again celebrate you for this new season, and we know that the best is yet to come. It's in Jesus's name that we pray. Let everyone say amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance.
... of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. I'd now like to turn the gavel over to Chief Judge Scherstrom to run our installation ceremony.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
It's a privilege to be here with you today. I am John Scherstrom. I'm the Chief Judge of the Second Judicial Circuit, serving the six counties Leon, Gadsden, Franklin, Jefferson, Liberty, and Waukulla Counties. It's a privilege to be here with you, and on behalf of the 26 judges of the circuit, particularly the five county judges of Leon County, we bring greetings and express our gratitude to be able to be here with you today. I'd like to recognize some of the dignitaries that are here to mark this great occasion, the solemn passing of the trust of the people, the privilege, the honor, and the burden of service from worthy hands to worthy hands today. First of all, former Mayor John Marks is present. Mayor Marks. Former City Commissioner Nancy Miller is present. The Honorable Jeremy Matlow is present. I thought, there he is, thank you, the City Commissioner. City Manager Reese Goode. There he is, thank you, Mr. Goode. City Attorney Cassandra Jackson. City Auditor Joseph Mazaleski. You may have gotten close to that name. Thank you. To get me back later, you can try to pronounce my name. City Treasurer Clerk James Cook is present. Yes, thank you, Mr. Cook. Former City Commissioner, the great Bob Rackliff is present today. My goodness, Marjorie Turnbull. Where's Marjorie? Oh, my goodness, thank you so much. You honor us. Bruce Host is present today. There he is, thank you so much, Mr. Host. Supervisor of Elections, the Honorable Mark Early is present today. Mr. Early, thank you. Leon County Property Appraiser Akeem Akinyemi is present. Where is he? There he is, thank you, Akeem. Our State Attorney, the Honorable Jack Campbell. There he is, Jack, standing in the back. Leon County School Board Elect Darrell Jones is present. President of Florida A&amp;M University, Dr. Larry Robinson is present. Thank you, Dr. Robinson. We have some judges who are present here today. Judge-elect, Circuit Judge-elect David Frank is present, I think. It says that he's present, but I'm not sure that I see him. The Honorable James Lee Marsh is present, Circuit Judge. There he is, there's Judge Marsh. All right, so the great Nina Ashenoffy Richardson is present. I have to say the following thing about Nina. I'm surprised that she's here because her daughter is coming back for her first visit from the Naval Academy. So it's important for Nina to be here. Thanks so much. And the great Monique Richardson, our newest county judge, is present. And finally, Mayor John Daley is present. Mayor Daley. First visit back to this room since he was presiding over the commission. So I'm sure that is true. I'm sure that is true. All right.
Judge, before you go on, I can't let this moment pass by without saying, "Miss, they woke herself." Commissioner, Diane Williams-Cox is here, y'all.
Thank you so much. Sorry about that.
Oh, and State Representative Lorraine Osney is here, too.
There she is. My only excuse is I have my reading glasses on. I can't see anything more than about this far away from me, so...
Thank you, Judge.
I apologize. Thank you all so much. And at this time, I'd like to introduce the presently serving commissioners, the Honorable Nick Maddox Chairman, Honorable Jimbo Jackson, Vice Chairman, Honorable Bill Proctor, my longtime neighbor in the parking garage, the Honorable Brian Deluge is present, Honorable Kristen Dozier, and the Honorable Mary Ann Lindley. Thank you so much for letting me preside today. At this time, I would like that we give our close attention to Vice Chairman Jimbo Jackson for a presentation to the outgoing chairman. Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Judge Scherstrom. I was actually told to prepare some remarks. I'll try to keep them brief. I cut them down to 30 minutes. I want to start by saying what a privilege it's been to serve as your Vice Chair, and to see the way that you've led us through several difficult county issues. Hurricane Michael, category four storm, nearly category five, that hit our area, and the leadership that you provided, not only for our county, but our city and surrounding counties. I think of our Children's Services Council's meeting and the presiding that you did over that meeting that drew dozens of speakers, but nothing like the gun show meeting that drew hundreds of speakers, all of them passionate about their concerns, and you always few them with respect. In particular, the gun show meeting where we had over 100 events, you can probably tell me the exact number, but well over 100 speakers, and always allowing them time to say their piece, and at the point where it became contentious, you chimed in with appropriate remarks to keep folks sort of in line. Obviously, I've learned a lot from all of you in just my two short years here, but your amount of patience that you practice will be something that I try to pattern myself by. Now with that said, I have the distinct honor, I think we will, at this point, I will defer to our county administrator, but I do have the distinct honor of presenting this incredible personalized plaque to our Chairman, Mr. Nick Maddox, Chairman, 2017-2018 County Commissioner at Large, Leon County, Florida, in appreciation for your outstanding and dedicated leadership.
At this time, I will ask the county administrator to provide some remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman and Mr. Chairman. I didn't get what you wanted.
Thank you.
But instead, as is customary over the last few years, to memorialize and commemorate your year as Chair, we put together a photo collage of sorts, which was a, of what was a very busy year, I think you'd agree. You could see it was punctuated by events like Hurricane Michael. You'll see Created Equal there. Big events like Anita Davis Preserve and many others. So on behalf of all of the men and women of Leon County Government and the Board, we hope that you will hang this in your office and remember this as a great year as we will, and we thank you for it.
Thanks, sir.
Judge Scherstrom, you're on deck.
Thank you so much, sir.
At this time, we will administer the oath for the Commissioners to be installed, and I ask that District One Commissioner Proctor, District Three Commissioner-elect Minor, District Five Commissioner Dozier, and at Large Commissioner Maddox, please be seated in the audience for the administration of the oath to each of you individually, and then you will take your seats at the dais to mark this ceremony. Commissioner-elect Proctor, would you please come forward?
Thank you, sir.
Oh, my goodness, thank you so much. All right, so Commissioner, I'd ask that you please put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Left on the Bible. You know what? We're gonna bring you over here. Is that the right way? Okay, yeah, 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 okay. And repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
I will protect.
I will protect.
Support and defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
I am duly qualified.
Duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
I will well and faithfully perform.
I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of the Office of County Commissioner.
The duties of the Office of County Commissioner.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Judge. Ladies and gentlemen, I saw this picture this morning, and you see that young man there in the picture some years ago, as I had my hand up, he had his hand up, too. You see that? And he was holding his hand up, stepping into the office, I guess, with his father. This is a young man who's holding the Bible today, and I'm looking up at him now. And I also want to recognize my parents, William and Patricia Proctor, who stood with me in each of the previous times in which I've been here. Our family, we are honored that continuously our community sees favor in reelected me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioner, take your seat. I now ask that District Five Commissioner Kristen Dozier come forward to take the oath of office. Now that we learned where we're supposed to stand, we'll do it, we'll get it right this time. What do you want to make? All right, very good. So would you please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
I will support, protect, and defend.
I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States and the state of Florida.
Of the United States and the state of Florida.
I am duly qualified.
I am duly qualified.
To hold office under the Constitution.
To hold office under the Constitution.
I will well and faithfully perform.
I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of the Office of County Commissioner.
The duties of the Office of County Commissioner.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You want to say a few words?
I will go quick. Thank you, Judge. It is quite an honor to be reelected and to continue to be part of this amazing family, county staff, and the incredible support and partnerships we have, and also all of my colleagues. Mr. Minor, looking forward to serving with you. And for my family, it has grown. John and Walker, thank you for joining me today, and your family, Nancy, who are all my family now, too, and Bill, thank you, and my parents, Noreen, Laurie, and Kelly, and my sister, niece, and nephew for being here, and everyone. Really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Commissioner, you may take your seat. I ask now that at-large Commissioner Nick Maddox come forward to take the oath of office. Left hand on the Bible, right hand. Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
I will support, protect, and defend.
I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States and the state of Florida.
Of the United States and the state of Florida.
I am duly qualified.
I am duly qualified.
To hold office under the Constitution.
To hold office under the Constitution.
I will well and faithfully perform.
I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of the Office of County Commissioner.
The duties of the Office of County Commissioner.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Commissioner Maddox, you may take your seat on the dais. Or say a few words.
I'll tell you what, man, so, no, listen, if you look at the agenda, well, the script they gave me, I was supposed to give a couple of words after I've received my gift as outgoing Chairman, but I guess the Board was tired of hearing me speak. Spent right on through that part, but look, as I stand here today, I'm proud to be reelected as your at-large Commissioner, even more proud to see folks in the crowd who were here on day one. Shawn Pittman, Ted Thomas, Darrell Jones, my wife, Tina Maddox, Nyla Maddox, Miley wasn't quite here yet, but she was on the way. And now we have a new one on the way. We don't quite know what it is yet, but it's coming. This past year was quite the year, and it ended with a climactic end that I could have never, ever imagined. I will tell you this, though, the work that I put in this year and the year that I had as Chairman was one that taught me to appreciate democracy, taught me to work hard to make sure that we ensure that every single part of our democracy stays in place, and that every, 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 every single vote will count and should count. We should be proud of the way that we conducted ourselves as Leon County citizens throughout the year. We should be proud of the way, and multiple times, we came together as a community through tragedy throughout this year. I mean, it's been a very trying year, and we take it in stride, but I don't want anybody to sit back in your seats right now and underestimate just how much we went through as a community this year, and how strong we came out of it as a community this year. But just as we transition into our next year, we have to celebrate the year that we had, but we also have to celebrate the leaders that are riding off into the set-set on to bigger and better things. Learned so much from our Mayor Andrew Gillum. Very proud of the run he made for Governor, even proud of the way that he fought to the end to make sure that every vote was counted and that everybody got a chance to get their voice heard. Very proud to say to my colleague, or my ex-colleague now, John Daley will be our next Mayor of the City of Tallahassee, and the work he's going to put in there. Diane Williams-Cox, who has run and run again, but now we can call our City Commissioner. Very proud to have her over there. I know she's going to do some great things. And Jeremy Matlow, who takes me very early on and said he wanted to be a City Commissioner, is now sitting as your City Commissioner. I think what we have now, we have two boards that work very well together, very, very well together, and I think that you'll see that in years to come. I would be remiss if I also didn't recognize that transitioning our university, of course we have our President over at FSU, President Thrasher, but the 12th President of the Florida A&amp;M University, Larry Robinson, is in the building, just freshly becoming so. Everybody get up and hand. And last but not least, I am also proud to celebrate our new colleague, Rick Minor. Rick is going to do an excellent job. He's already started stealing some of my best ideas. So I'm on Facebook one day, and I happened to see Rick's Facebook post that talks about his mobile hours and how he's going to be out in the district holding. I said, "Rick, man, I've been doing that for years, man." Yeah, he said, "Yeah, Nick, but I'm perfect." I'm actually giving it a name. You were just sitting in a place, but... Tell you what, one of those newbies, boy, I get you every time. But look, thank you so much for this opportunity. I truly appreciate to be representing you again as your at-large Commissioner, and look forward to the year we have to come. Vince, if this is an easy year for Jimbo, we're going to have some words. And last but not least, again, thank you so much. I appreciate being here, and I appreciate you believing in me.
I now call on District Three Commissioner-elect Rick Minor to come forward to take the oath Commissioner-elect, before I administer the oath, I just wanted to say one thing to you, which is, it is a great privilege and a great honor to have the confidence of the community expressed in electoral, our electoral democracy. I've been a judge for a long time, and I brought this robe out of retirement, and I brought it to show you something, which is this. And the reason I brought this robe to show you this is because honors and privileges, they're very real things, and then the hard work begins. And so I just wanted to express my appreciation for your willingness to take on the privilege, the honor, also the responsibility and the burden of this role. It's a privilege to administer this oath of office to you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
So if you put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, I'll administer the oath. Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
I will support, protect, and defend.
I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States and the state of Florida.
Of the United States and the state of Florida.
I am duly qualified to hold office.
I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
I will well and faithfully perform.
I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of the Office of County Commissioner.
The duties of the Office of County Commissioner.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God. I can't believe I'm here. People that run for office, they have moments, memories, that stick with them. On Election Day, I was greeting voters at the polling locations, and... On Election Day, I was greeting voters at the polling locations, and people would go in and vote and then come out, and as they came out, some of them would say, "I voted for you. Do good. Make it count." That has stuck with me, and that's gonna stick with me for as long as I serve all of you. I'm really humbled by the familiar faces I see. It's no secret that I've run for office a couple times. I see people here that have been with me every step of the way, and I can't, words can't express how grateful I am to you and how much I appreciate the trust that you're putting in me to, to serve as a public servant. I just can't, I don't have the words to describe it. There are more people that I can possibly thank that have helped me get here and to help me get to this point where I get to work with amazing people here at the dais, but also within the entire county government. Let me tell you, your county government is in good hands with these people, and I, it's an honor, and I, I am enthusiastic about working and serving with them. There's a whole list of people I had written up, a list to say thanks to, but let me suffice by saying thanks to all of you that supported us during the campaign, for the folks that didn't. I, I work for you, I work for all of you now, and I'm never going to forget that. And one, one person I really want to thank is, is my wife. If you know Jessica Lowminer, you know that I married up. I know you all are thinking that, let me just put that out there, right? It's funny, 'cause it's true. But Jess, I want to thank you for, for bearing with me, not just during this campaign, but for the last 10 years. I'm so grateful to you, and I, I am the luckiest man in the world to be married to you. I love you, and... Nothing gives me greater pleasure than to, than to be your husband and to raise our two wonderful princesses, our daughter Madeline, who's four years old, and our younger daughter, Charlotte, who is five days old. So, thank you all very much. I, I'm grateful to all of you, and I'm eager to get started.
And Commissioner Miner, you may take your seat on the dais. Thank you very much. So those of you that know me know that I have a day job when I'm not swearing in county commissions, which is to be the dependency judge. I've got 40, well, the last part of 40 dependency families on the third floor. There in Judge Reynolds, good hands, but I'm a little territorial about those cases, they mean a lot to me. So at this time, I'm gonna ask that our clerk of court, Gwen Marshall, please come and take the podium and preside over the reorganization ceremony. Clerk Marshall.
My name is Gwen Marshall, I'm the clerk of court and county comptroller here in Leon County, and I have the distinct honor of conducting the reorganization ceremony for the elections of the board through the election year of 2018, 19, Chair and Vice Chairman of the Leon County Board of Commissioners. So no further ado, do we have any calls for nomination for Chair? Chairman Maddox?
Ma'am clerk, I'd like to, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Jimbo Jackson as our Chair.
Got a second? Any other nominations? Now that the motion has closed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any other polls? All right, next order of business, do we have any nominations for Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate the longest-serving county commissioner, and I don't know if that means, last night they mentioned something about being old at the city commission, but longest-serving county commissioner in a non-chaired position, Brian Deluge.
Second.
Do we have any other nominations from the diocese? Hearing no other nominations, we're gonna close the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, I guess I need to state the motion. All in favor of Commissioner Deluge as Vice Chair of the Leon County Board of County Commissioners, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations, Commissioner Deluge, Vice Chairman. Now at this time, I would ask Chairman Jackson to meet me at the podium. Okay. I'll try to guide you. Congratulations.
Thank you, you're awesome.
You can put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jimbo Jackson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and faithfully execute.
That I will well and faithfully execute.
The duties of the Office of Chairman.
The duties of the Office of Chairman.
Of the Leon County Board of County Commissioners.
Of the Leon County Board of County Commissioners.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I have, I am honored and I'm humbled to fill a chair that's been filled by some awfully big shoes in the past. I couldn't help but think today of Jane Salz, who represented District Two for many, many years, and who I learned so much from about quiet leadership and about taking care of people first. I would hope to one day live up to the legacy that she left behind as a chairman, not once but twice, on this board. To my fellow commissioners, I've already learned so much. Rick, look forward to you bringing new ideas and a new face to the table and hopefully not making the same mistakes I made as a new county commissioner. To my family.
Thank you so much for my daughters being here today. We are, they are warriors, those two are, Ashley and Ally, and they are here with my granddaughter Addison. She's the little one in the yellow dress, in case you guys were confused. My wife couldn't be here, she's traveling to visit family, but she was my wife, and more importantly, my campaign manager and advisor during our run for this office in 2016. To the world's greatest aide, Kelly Sermons. Kelly, you wanna come up and speak? I didn't think so. Kelly Sermons is an incredible resource, and I could not do the job I do without Kelly, and I would be remiss to not give you a round of applause. Thank you so much. I look forward to leading the commission in the coming year, and Nick, it's okay if we don't have a name storm. But seriously, thank you so much for placing your confidence in me, and I am very humbled by the opportunity. Thanks again.
Y'all have no idea how, how much I was trying to get away from that chair.
Nick moved it all down and...
I did.
All right. This time, I believe that I am supposed to recognize that we are having a, a short reception. We'll reconvene in about 45 minutes, and by the time we get out of here, actually, the commissioners need to stay in chambers for the photo, as well as the aides. And we'll get to that in just a second. We will have a benediction at this time by Brother Dennis Young from Bible Believers Fellowship. Before he gets started, I'll do a brief biography on Pastor Young. He was actually the headmaster at my high school, so you are allowed to only listen to him for a limited amount of time after our presentation today, but Brother Young and I go back many, many years, and I really, really cannot say enough how grateful I am for you being here today, so thank you so much.
It's my privilege. Father, how grateful we are to be here today and to see the things that you've done in people's lives. And Lord, we do thank you for the honor of knowing who you are. And Father, we need your guidance. We're so thankful today of this commission and the joint efforts that they place in doing their best to fulfill the desires of this community. And Lord, we thank you for their guidance, for their families, and actually the time that they will put in doing their best to find what's best for us. And Father, we place them in your loving hands for your guidance and their families. And Father, I thank you for the United States of America. What a great privilege it is to be a part of this country, be a part of this county, and most of all, to be a part of your family. For we ask this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. God bless you.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn? Adjourned, we will reconvene at 4:30.